Okay, we'll go ahead and call the work session to order for the Wilmer City Council Monday, May 15th. We're at the council chambers. And the first item we have on the agenda is public comment. Are there any public, members of the public that wish to speak? Seeing and hearing none, the first presentation we'll have tonight is on our district heat update, proposed financial assistance program and the timeline. Mr. Heron.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Thank you for allowing me a little bit of time this evening to give you an update on the status of the district heat and the potential decommissioning of the district heat. On May 8th, this past Monday, at the commission meeting, the commission has set a potential decommissioning date for July 1st, 2020. That is one year longer than what statute requires. The commission or the city to give our district heat customers for decommissioning, that date was tentatively set by input from a number of our customers as well as the contractors that are responsible for converting the customers over. They said that extra year would be nice if they could have that. So, the commission is proposing that to the council for consideration. And tonight here at the work session, give you a little bit of an update of the process. In your packet, you have the timeline for the process. We've been working with Mr. Scott in laying that timeline out so we meet all the statutory requirements along with a financing program that is part of it. The commission talked about that as well for in-depth. And what you have in front of you as you look at that, the commission felt that the financing should be left up to our contractors, to CenterPoint, and our lending agencies, that we are not in the business of financing. So when you look at the program, it is developed or designed to really encourage the customers, if they need financing, to seek financing from those that are in the business of financing. So, the commission will be holding a, will be holding the public hearings on, next week Monday on May 22nd, first for the decommissioning date, as well as followed up by the financial assistance program. Upon adoption of those resolutions, they will be forwarded to the city council. And in the outline, it outlines the responsibilities of the city council in that process. We also have, or I have spoke with Mr. Holland, whether, you know, we should work with Mr. Robert in preparing the public notices as well as the ordinances that are required. And he asked that we do that. So we'll be working with Mr. Scott in that process and forwarding those notices as well as the ordinance over to Mr. Holland or over to the city. So, that's where we're at, at this time. We have on Wednesday, we have one more public hearing, or not public hearing, informational meeting with our customers. We sent out notices and we published it in the paper, sent out notice directly to every one of the customers informing them of where we're at, answers to all the questions that were presented to us since we started, since we reached out to the customers, informing them of the potential decommissioning and soliciting their feedback. So that went out and we're holding, holding one more informational meeting to address any additional questions that they may have. So with that, I guess I'll turn it back over to Mayor Calvin.
John, would it be possible to send the entire council that packet that you sent out to the customers, just so that we have the same information that the customers have? I know some of us received phone calls on that. And when we're not aware of that, or not aware of what was sent out, we're kind of blind as to how to answer those questions. So, that'd be helpful.
Yes, absolutely. I apologize for that. That didn't happen.
Counsel, you have some questions? Andrew.
Thank you, Marv. Thank you for being here today. Might be a difficult question or set of questions to ask, but first question being, from the feedback that you've gotten from current customers, what's the number one or, you know, if you could rate like a high priority concern, what's the biggest concern that they're bringing to you? And secondly, maybe if there's a particular group, whether it be the school district or business owners or residential, who have you heard the most feedback from?
Okay, thank you. Council member, applause. Probably the question that, that we, more of a comment that we receive more than anything is if we have to make the investment to maintaining reliable system and have to double our rates, they as a customer would prefer to invest in their own system and have their own system versus having us make the investment and having to double their rates. Now, the caveat that most customers would prefer either, you know, so they express concerns both ways that, you know, they would like to see us continue as usual, but not to have their rates increased. Therefore, we wouldn't be able to make the investment. From the group, we are hearing more from the residential customer base than we are from the commercial customer base. And with that said, last week, we were notified by two residential customers and one commercial customer that they had switched over. So, I mean, the trend continues, you know, as I indicated earlier, we're at roughly 400, 390-some customers was our peak, we're down to 200, and that number continues to dwindle. So, our customers are transitioning, you know, and continue to try and to transition. So.
That answers my question perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fernando?
Yeah, thank you for coming in. I always appreciate you taking the time to educate us on this stuff. In your outline, and I, my computer isn't up, but you talked about giving some sort of consideration for those customers going pure electric versus like your other sources of heating fuels. Why is it just electric, given the...
That was part of the discussion that the commission had. It's a good question. As I stated earlier, the commission, they want to see, the commission funding these projects as last resort for the customers. CenterPoint has a financing program, some of the contractors have a financing program, and of course, the bulk of the financing I would envision will come from the lending agency. So that's the reason why the financing program, why the commission developed it as they did. It's really a last resort for anybody that is unable to obtain financing elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Thanks, John, for being here. By extending the date for shut-off date for another year, does that help you with some of your employees too that might be on the bubble for retirement?
It does. It creates a couple different challenges for us. Yes, it helps in a sense that we have a longer window of planning, but we also have positions open now that we're going to be talking about, are we going to be able to hold them open for three years? So, there's pros and cons to that extra date, but yeah, all in all, it gives us a larger window of time to plan. So.
Thank you.
Sean?
Thank you, John. Same, I have two questions. First one, kind of jumping off of what Rick just asked. Any, what are, what are in the plans, we've talked about before, of some of those separation things with our current employees? And we don't want to leave them high and dry, kind of a thing we've talked about before. And the second question for you will be, we got the financial assistance program, have there been other avenues explored, grant opportunities and any other pieces that maybe we could address as well?
Sure. No, we've, we've looked at and researched all possibilities for grants on the web, contacts, contacted state departments, contacted our representatives, both state and federal levels. We contacted our lobbyists, down, our lobbyists that we have down in DC. And basically, there's, there's no grants available to transition over. So, and your other question, you know, with staff again, yes, the commission is, staff is, I am very concerned with our employees. They have done an excellent job for the utility for this community. And they need to be here to run the plant because that's how we provide the district heat to our customers. The labor committee, we're doing this concurrently, even though the date isn't set yet, but we feel it's important for our employees to keep the process moving and that, you know, we can inform them, you know, opportunities that are available through potential jobs that are available now. We're not able to talk about what could come up in the next two years when we're visiting with our, our labor attorney, Mr. Madden. He says all we can talk about is what's available today and what we're able to hold open. But I think a couple other pieces that are equally as important as will there be jobs for them? We've reached out to the city, talked with Mr. Holland a little bit, talked with Mr. McGuire a little bit earlier. And once we know where we're at from utility, I'll be back in those discussions. We were, reached out to workforce to see what's available for retraining. We have that information available as well. But probably a more important piece is a severance package for our employees. And the labor committee, about a month ago when we met with the labor committee, they directed staff to develop a severance package that would be attractive enough to retain our employees for the period of time that we need them, but also then would provide them some livelihood while they're transitioning over to different jobs, especially if we don't have jobs available here at the utility or at the city for them. So, that's where that's at. More to come on that piece of it, on the severance package piece of it, because that's definitely of high interest for the employees, for the commission, I'm assuming for the city council as well, to have an understanding of when we say we need to take care of our employees, what does that mean? What does that look like? And the commission's in the process of developing that. So, thank you.
Audrey?
Thank you. If I remember correctly, you had made a statement that if, I'm just questioning the timeframe, that if the large users left, that the cost of running the system, I mean, that it could cost the utilities additional money to keep the system running? Just curious about your three years versus two-year...
Sure. No, commission looked at that and considered that in setting that date. What's, we don't have the crystal ball, so we don't know what we're going to have for expenses, but, you know, we're going to minimize our expenses, we're going to minimize the repairs, basically, you know, keep the system rolling to the extent that we have to and only invest in, in repairs that we have to. As the customers fall off, it's going to cost us the same to continue to run that and our revenue is going to continue to diminish. So our greater loss will be the loss in, in the revenue that we are presently receiving from the district heat customers, while on the expense side, those expenses will remain the same. So.
Well, thank you for the update. I appreciate that. I know that there's ongoing conversations happening in the community. I get asked about it quite frequently. So, thank you for informing us. And again, the process would be is that you're holding the public hearings and then when we make that decision as a council, then we'll have a public hearing as well. And then the public will have an opportunity to address us as well.
Correct. That'd be correct. There'll be a public hearing on the utility side as well as the council side.
Right.
A couple other questions. June 15th, if the council would prefer that I'm back in front of you, I will attend that meeting and give an update on the resolutions that the commission will be adopting. So, let Mr. Holland know if you want me to be at that meeting and I'll definitely be there. And then, this past year with the flooding, the council has elected to waive the mechanical permits for the individuals, so that has come up, both from the residential side or from the customer side, I should say, as well as the contractor side. So I said I would bring it up in front of the council tonight and ask if that's something that the council wants to consider as well as to waive those mechanical permit fees for the district heat customers. So, with that...
I don't have anything, did we have something on that?
No, there's...
For our agenda?
Nope, that was not on the agenda. That came up later and, and we were asked if, if that would be considered, if the council would consider that. And I said I'd mention it here and the council, you can put it, you know, address it later or put it on next, next...
Can you work with Mr. Holland on that?
Two weeks' agenda.
Yep, yep. Talk to Mr. Holland about that and we can either bring it back to the next meeting on the work session, we don't have anything to review. So, unless council wants to make an action on it at this point, I guess I'm not...
We're not looking for an action here today. We don't need an action. It's, you know, the decommissioning date is tentatively, if, based on the schedule, the outline that we have, there will be the June meeting, the last June meeting of the city council. So, we would not need an answer before that for our contractors or customers.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'll mention it to Mr. Holland and he can place it on council agenda for a yea or nay on that.
Sure, thank you.
So.
It'd be good to get some projections. We did that last time.
You know, when you prepare that, if you could prepare, prepare the projections as well, on what the...
Projections.
Projections on the cost, what it would cost if we waived those fees.
Oh, sure. We will do that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for John from the council? Thank you very much for your presentation and go out and enjoy the beautiful evening.
I will do that. Thank you and thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you very much. Next, we have a presentation on a potential workforce housing project. Am I going to Bruce? Okay, Bruce? I don't have a list here on who I'm supposed to go to, so I'm kind of confused. So, I apologize.
... I wanted to give you this stuff and I didn't start. City's got an opportunity now to participate in a workforce housing project. It's one that's seen quite a bit of discussion at the local level. There's been a global housing group through the 2040 process. They've been talking about housing options and is the first one really been able to center heat into and have a willing developer that's interested in doing a project. The project is under consideration and I'll just give some brief information here. I'm sure there will be plenty for you to fill in, but I'm just making a few hot spots here. Looking at a 45 million workforce housing project, this is a three-story building in southeast Wilmer. Developer is Commonwealth. They've been looking at Wilmer sites and they've kind of put together a project for quite a while. They have a purchase agreement with the property. It's his only change in conditional use permit required as part of the land. His approval process, the planning commission has given a formal notification last week that the project makes sense, meaning they have the various changes. There will be an application made for housing tax credits and other possible financing tools. Could include taxes on bonding, taxing financing, and possibly waiving sewer and water tapping fees. Staff thinks this is an important project and the city needs to continue to work with the developer. Primary issues that will involve the city are financial, whether it's bonds, tip, whatever, tapping fees. Those will all involve the city. Initially, the developer in the application for tax credits will need a resolution expressing general support for the housing project. And I don't believe that that's needed tonight. That would probably be in a gen item for two weeks ago. I'll probably be moving that direction. This project has a positive financial impact on the city, creates much needed workforce housing and a significant increase in taxable bills once it's completed. We haven't yet figured out the impact from participation in various financing tools. Late today, I got some numbers run by planners and associates run over by Aaron with regard to the TIV project. And I think it's a little premature to discuss those numbers at this point. Aaron and I will probably discuss over tomorrow morning on the other meeting. If the city lends its bonding authority to the project, all the costs for financing become a responsibility of the developer at that point. So at this point, we're, we're sitting with three alternatives. And that's to express general support for the project and move forward with possible financial assistance, to not support the project, or to offer support to the project without any local involvement. And without some local financial involvement, I think it's safe to say that the project is going to be dead in the water because of the tax credit program. So it's a recommendation of staff that the council will be forward by expressing general support at some point and to specify a preliminary commitment to the possible use of bonding, the use of our bonding authority, taxing for financing, and waiving tapping fees. The tapping fees calculated for the whole project, they're only 63,000, they're part of a project where all the bonds have already been paid. So there'd be no lot of pocket costs to the city for that. With us tonight from Commonwealth is Erin Anderson. Erin, I would appreciate if you could provide the council with some more details and give them a better understanding of the direction that the project needs to go at this point at the city level.
Bruce, I just have one question. First off, thank you for bringing the project. It's exciting to hear anything happening in housing. You know, that's been a priority of mine to see something happen, so I'm really excited to see this. The other thing is, do we need to fast-track this to move it to the council agenda for this evening, or are you asking that to come just in two weeks?
I think we've got two weeks, right?
Right, the application's June 15th, so it's long.
I'll come back to the next council meeting with a card form and the specific request.
Thank you. Mr. Backman?
Mayor Marv, it's good to be here tonight. I'm very pleased that we have this particular developer here. I've been working with Commonwealth in Wilmer for over a year now. We have looked at several locations throughout the city. We think we have found a positive location for this $8 million project. It's a significant capital investment. They have major investors that they work with. They're based out of Wisconsin and they're interested in this market. You might want to ask, why housing? Well, households with modest means need safe, suitable housing that they can afford. When housing is affordable, such families are able to put food on the table and better afford necessities of life. The housing stability for families in Wilmer can also have an effect on childhood development and children's school performance. Overall, the development of affordable housing increases spending and employment in the surrounding economy. It reduces the likelihood of eviction and foreclosure. Without a sufficient supply of affordable housing, employers can be at a competitive disadvantage because of their subsequent difficulty in attracting and retaining workers. It also can have implications for our regional economic competitiveness. And I'd like to just pass around two letters here quickly and... This letter is from Candy Mall. And the way it's written is, "On behalf of Candy Mall, we would like to express our support for Commonwealth Development's new housing project named 15th Street Flats, located at 1613 15th Street Southeast Wilmer. And as a point of reference, this would be in the area to the west of Pizza Ranch." So just to kind of give you in that general vicinity. Candy Mall employs over 300 people in the retail and office space. Commonwealth's efforts will benefit the neighborhood and the city of Wilmer. Over half our workforce is in the Wilmer area. This makes the proposed development very important to us. It will offer workforce housing within a short distance of our shopping center." And this is written by John Vornholdt, the general manager for Candy Mall. He also mentioned to me offline that he said, you know, "I frequently get our retailers asking me if there's housing available because their employees are having challenges finding it." I will pass this second one around. "On behalf of Jenny O. Turkey Store, we would like to express our support for Commonwealth Development's new housing project named 15th Street Flats. On company, on a company basis, Jenny O. Turkey Store employs over 7,000 people, primarily located in Minnesota and in Wisconsin. Of that number, 1,483 employees have a home address in Wilmer. This makes the proposed development very important to us, as it will offer workforce housing within a short distance of our plants, corporate office, and the live production facilities in and around the Wilmer area. As we recruit new employees, we frequently hear complaints and concerns about the lack of available housing in Wilmer. It's clear that Commonwealth's efforts will support the growth of the community and our company by making more housing options available in the city of Wilmer. So we're very pleased that we've gotten, and I have some other letters, I won't bring those up right now, but the business community is, is open and supportive of these options. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but at this point, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Erin Anderson, so two Erins here. And Erin's been great to work with. I actually have a letter of reference from another community she worked with in Cloquet, Minnesota, extolling her virtues and being very positive about how they worked, how Commonwealth worked with that community. Erin.
Thank you. Erin? Yeah, there, Erin.
That's confusing.
Mr. Backman.
Thank you so much for the introduction and for providing a little context on the affordable housing program that we're working with. My name is Erin Anderson. I'm with Commonwealth Development Corporation. We are an affordable housing developer, owner, and manager. We are new to Minnesota. We've only been here a couple years now. However, I personally have a lot of experience in Minnesota and I, I'm, I've been in St. Paul since, for the last 15 years and so, and this is my home state. So, I just wanted to start out with a little bit of background on, on our, our company since you don't know us. And I realized, I didn't ask if there was a clicker. And I wanted to thank you for your time today. So, we're a company that was established in 2001. We're a full-service development, construction, architecture, and property management firm. We have 157 employees. Those are primarily folks in the construction and property management business because that's where you need, you know, more boots on the ground. But we do have about 12 people in our development company as well. And we're pretty much spread throughout the United States. We have representation in most regions of the United States, but we did get our start in Wisconsin, so we have the Midwestern values. We're a long-term partner. We typically develop and hold our projects and are proud of our multiple project history These are just a few of the names of the folks that are hands-on with this development. And hopefully, as things progress, you'll have the opportunity to meet some of the other individuals. I myself am going to be the main point of contact with this development and I'm considered the regional vice president. I'm responsible for development work in Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, and Iowa presently. So we, at this point, we have 40-plus affordable housing tax credit allocations in seven states. We are a multifaceted company in the sense, as I mentioned, we have construction of new units, but we also convert historic buildings and we also work on what we consider more of a moderate rehab, which would be taking existing affordable housing that's older and refreshing it and getting it back, back up to code. We involve multiple successful partnerships with nonprofit and for-profit entities because we can't do this alone. And our project selection and flexibility, supported by our vertical integration, are what we believe sets us apart from some of the other affordable housing developments and leads us to success. As I mentioned, our company is new to Minnesota, but I am not. I personally have been involved hands-on with eight affordable housing developments in Minnesota. Seven of these are complete and fully occupied and constructed. We have townhome developments with my former employer that I worked on that were affordable that used the same programs that Erin was just describing in Cambridge, Minnesota. We also worked on an adaptive reuse of a historic school in Little Falls, two affordable new construction developments in Minneapolis, a mixed-use development, which was one of my favorites, in Rochester, if you've ever, many people make a trip to the Mayo Clinic, so it's right along Civic Center Drive. It's, it's a newly constructed affordable housing development that was about seven years ago. It also has a childcare component. We worked with a separate childcare company to put that together as well as some commercial space, so it was a true mixed-use development. It was one of my favorite projects I've ever worked on. And, and then recently, since I've been with Commonwealth, we brought a new construction project to the northern part of the state... project to the northern part of the state in Cloquet, Minnesota, White Pine Apartments. I'll just flip through quickly a few examples of some of the quality and craftsmanship of our developments. This is a senior housing development in Fond du Lac, Wisconsin. And this one's in West Bend, Wisconsin. This is an adaptive reuse of a school in Rhinelander. These are our cottages. They're a very popular product, single-level rental townhomes. I'm working on two new proposed developments in east-central Minnesota with this style of construction. Didn't come together to find the perfect site for that here. Definitely need a little bit more land for this. And, you know, finding that that's also close to amenities is kind of what we'll be kind of looking to do here next year if we can keep it going. And that brings us to our current site. As Erin mentioned, we've been looking for sites. I wanted to find something for the cottages, wanted to find more land. We also looked at a downtown site, the old Mills Auto site. They just... Those didn't pan out. This particular site is great because it is connected to a lot of community amenities. It's fantastic that the brand-new elementary school is being constructed in this neighborhood. It also, in terms of density and use, it works out well, because across the street we have Dana Heights, which are two-story walk-up units. And then we've got our commercial use on the other side. But it... We're looking at 45 units within a three-story mid-rise building with elevator. So these are going to be fully accessible. And that is one of the big pieces with this, because we want to actually incorporate five units for physically disabled individuals with support services in this development. So that's really important to us, whereas some of the other developments in the area might be a walk-up style. We really want that accessibility here. It will not have age restrictions. And so you'll find all ages here, but that means there could be some older people as well. But most of the units are going to be two- and three-bedrooms within this three-story complex. And we were able to fit two-to-one parking on the site, all surface parking. Let me go back here. Bruce did mention we have to rezone and get a conditional use permit. But at this point, I think it's just a preliminary understanding that it's an acceptable use. It's not required that we rezone prior to the application deadline on June 15th. And this is a concept rendering. This is... This was actually generated for our project up in Cloquet. But I think it'll fit... This similar concept will fit in really well here. It's been positively received by some folks in the community that have taken a look at So that brings us to how we put together our rent and income structure. As Erin mentioned, this is a tax credit development. And so what that means is it's affordable to folks essentially at 60% area median income and lower. And I did bring the details on what that equates to. For a four-person family in Wilmer, and it goes by the county median income, that's And it's adjusted by family size, so it moves up and down based on that. This thing is very sensitive. Not sure what I did there. I must have been pushing the button when I didn't realize.
You gonna move back?
Yeah. We'll go back to... One more. Perfect. So even though all of the units within the 9% tax credit development, we're actually looking at submitting what's called a dual application. And the reason that we do this is because these credits are so highly competitive, they're only going to award probably a dozen in greater Minnesota throughout the state. And so they also offer what's called a 4% credit, which is a less restrictive rent structure. So I'll go through each one. They offer pros and cons. But with the 9% credit, we still consider it mixed income, because we have a range from 30% area median income to 60% area median income. We'll have 30% of the units targeted at 30% AMI and 70% at 60% AMI. And as I mentioned, it's a combination of one, two, and three bedrooms with a focus on the two and the three bedrooms, because it's really intended that families can live there. We have an overall rents ranging from $280 to $771. I do have the details up there if you're interested in going through them, but on average, $545 for rent here. And I think it is also important to note, I mentioned the units for the disabled that we're trying to incorporate. We're also wanting to incorporate five units, which... So we needed 10% in order to score well with this development through Minnesota Housing, 10% of permanent supportive housing for families and individuals that have experienced homelessness at some point in their life. So it's a small number within the development. The state has found... Every year, they're doing a point-in-time count on how many homeless people are they finding on the streets each year. They are seeing that number go down. They started integrating these small numbers of units within larger affordable developments about seven or eight years ago, and they have noticed real success with it. So it's something that they're going to continue to prioritize. And I know that... And Jill's working with us at the HRA on property management here. And I know... What's the closest property that integrates LTH units? Homeless?
Country View Estates.
Country View Estates and West Winds participate in that program. So the tax credit equity on the left-hand side is why that 9% credit is so competitive. As you can see, it provides the bulk of the funding for the development. These tax credits get sold to investors. It's either a pool of investors, or it could be a private bank. Wells Fargo and US Bank are the largest buyers of these tax credits. The pricing has gone down recently because of the anticipation of corporate tax reform. However, it is still the largest source of funding for these developments. On the right-hand side, you'll see the difference between the competitive and the less competitive application. That 4% application, you're going to have a lot less tax credit equity. And we're going to be getting some feedback as to whether the scenario on the right is something Minnesota Housing really is going to consider feasible. I have seen developments with as high as that $4 million of gap funding from the state go in on a per-unit basis. I've seen it before, but we're going to really need to get some comments from them, and that's part of the reason why we're taking this to council at the beginning of June, so that we can get some feedback on that in the meantime. The likely scenario is the one on the left. So when we look at our uses, the main issues that come up are cost containment. That is another very important item, and it's only increasingly so. We're actually evaluated against all of our peers as to how we do on cost containment. They take all the applications in, and then they line them up. They group them based on similar product type, and then they'll award points according to whether you are competitive on costs. And then green communities criteria, that has to do with creating the most sustainable product that we can. Intermediary costs, that has to do with making sure to keep all of our non-construction costs reasonable as well. There's also points for that. And then the other cost differential is pretty small on here, but the difference between the right hand and the left hand there on those 4% applications, the soft costs are just a little bit higher because of the bond issuance involved. So you're going to have your bond attorney, et cetera. So this is the overall timeline. We submit the application June 15th. Minnesota Housing awards October 25th. We would hope to start... I would try to start sooner than May, but MHFA usually looks at that as a pretty standard timeframe for them to get to a closing. And then we have about an 11-month construction period, so April 2019 finish. So some of the questions that come up with affordable housing in any community usually If there's a lot of single-family homes in the neighborhood, there's always questions about bringing multifamily, and in particular, affordable, to the community. In this case, there really isn't a lot of single-family nearby, but we still try to address all the same issues, even as if they were there. So addressing property value, typically, overall, we've found that the value of surrounding properties near a tax credit development like this either stay the same or improve. We address issues or concerns regarding crime through stringent background checks. And we have really specific procedures. We've even narrowed it down to the point where our... The five units for the formerly homeless have their own criteria that are specific to that population, so that they can live in harmony with everyone else and move into that transition of becoming a long-term resident. Because the idea is that when they move in, they're signing a one-year lease. It's not a shelter. For all practical purposes, they're living there as a permanent resident, just like everyone else. So we want to set them up for success. But we do have slightly different selection criteria, but it's mostly only flexible in areas that do not involve harming the health, safety, and welfare of their neighbors. That's the gist of it. I can get you all the details if you need it. So the quality of product. I mentioned we're working with the HRA here. So management is key, very key to success of the ongoing operations of a property. And I think the HRA has a really good reputation in the community for that. And we have a commitment to these long-term assets. We have to hold these properties a minimum of 30 years. So once we're committed to this development, it's a very, very long-term commitment. And then scale and density in relation to the neighborhood. You know, setbacks. There's pretty significant setbacks just based on the code with this development that we've already incorporated. And I mentioned the green communities. We don't need to go through all of these, but healthy living environment, healthy building materials, energy efficiency. So we're going to be looking at the HRA to provide us input, so that we can be sure to design this optimally to meet their style of management. We're also going to be requesting from the county that some vouchers be converted to project-based rental assistance for those five units that are designated for the homeless. And then from the city, Bruce mentioned we are requesting a resolution of support. We do have a document that we didn't bring to this meeting, and I'm thinking maybe we should have passed copies out, but there's what's called a planned community development plan that has been put together with a Vision 2040 group. And basically, it summarizes the demographics of the area and then the need for the housing study. And we should get a copy of that out, I think, to the group, because it's a really good piece for you to have as you're considering this proposal. Preliminary site plan approval, I guess, there was some preliminary discussion at the last planning commission. And then if we decide to pursue the bond allocation, I'm estimating that it would be approximately $1,430,000 long-term bonds and $3 million short-term, so 24-month construction bonds, if we were to go that route. It needs to be at least half the amount of the total development cost. And then we're also looking into the TIF, the potential for TIF here. And as Bruce mentioned, that's at the early stages at this point, but it's one more thing that would definitely help the competitive nature of the application. And that's it. Any questions for me?
Erin, thank you for your presentation. Very thorough.
Thanks.
Jill, you've reviewed everything, and you're feeling this is a good project to bring to Wilmer?
It would be a great project.
Okay. Counsel, anybody have any questions? Kathy, and then Julie, and Fernando.
First, I think it's a really attractive project. The structure of the building itself, I think, is very attractive. I like that you have three-bedroom units available, the mixed housing concept, the location of the neighborhood. I mean, there's just a lot of it that I really like about it. And knowing that Jill is here, I'm wondering if we could have you speak to your waiting list, if there's a waiting list for people to get into HRA housing, and what that process looks like from the customers, from our residents' point of view.
Well, most of our waiting lists are closed, because if we kept them open, we would have 1,000 households on there. And when you're trying to lease up something, you have those long waiting lists. It just... Then you get behind in leasing up. So when we open our Section 8 program, we allow 300 households on to the waiting list, and then we close it. And so the last time we opened it, which was, I believe, last August, it took us two weeks, and then we closed it again. I mean, you just get people on the waiting list that fast. So I think this program will be... Or this project would be very helpful in addressing some of that housing need for those working households that, you know, are in lower-paying jobs and really can't afford the high rents that some of the market rate rents are receiving. You know, we just see constantly people coming to our office, looking for something, getting emails constantly of, "I'm looking at coming back to Wilmer. Do you know of anybody that's renting something?" I think in the last week, I've probably... I mean, just me, I've probably had four or five of those emails on my own. So... And I'm really not the main contact for the agency. So I think this is really a project that would meet some of that need. Our voucher program is... We would like to be serving 100 people more, and we can't even serve 100 more households in our program. We should be serving 100 households more, but we can't, because we are spending all of the money on existing rents already to our landlords. So, you know, you get so much money from the federal government. They'd like you to have 377 households on there. You know, we're just below 300. So you can't even lease up what you should be.
Thank you. Bye. Thank you. I have a second question for Bruce, and I'm just wondering, given the financial support that we're looking at, or that's being proposed as far as the bond conduit and TIF and tapping fees, if we've ever done that type of thing in the past for a housing unit?
The city has been active in the past through the HRA in housing finance. The city has lent its bonding authority to a senior project in the past. At least one of the expansions at Bethesda used the city's housing authority or housing allocation. Legislation has changed regarding using TIF for multifamily housing or for housing in general, and I think the state's finally recognized the need for communities to be able to assist in workforce housing projects, and so they've changed some of the rules for TIF to give the city that tool.
Thank you.
Julie and then Fernando.
And this might be a question to both of you. Have you ever done a project where you have four-bedroom units? And was that any part of the discussion with this one for larger families?
You know, I don't think I personally have done any four-bedroom. And I think it becomes, when you're doing the market research, the three-bedrooms just seem to really trump the four-bedrooms, so much so that we just haven't gone that route. I don't know.
I guess it'd be a matter of cost.
Yeah. Yeah, especially because so much of what we're evaluated on is a per-unit cost, unfortunately. Some states have gone to a per-square-foot evaluation, which would help address that. I think Iowa is one. But when we're looked at on a per-unit basis and we're throwing four-bedrooms into the mix, it can really make us look like we're expensive. Yeah. And then, you also do have to have, I think, with a four-bedroom, you have to have two full bathrooms. With a three-bedroom, you can have, you have one and a half. Yeah, so it's a big difference. Are you seeing a big need for four-bedrooms here?
Yes.
Fernando, followed by Rick.
Well, I'm excited about the project, and yes, I understand we need it. And maybe this is, can be addressed to you, it's just maybe it's a statement. Wilmer is, I like to think we're as a progressive community. We have our technology campus, and in Minnesota, we have everyday kindergarten and stuff like that, and I like to have some of these new projects, Erin, that we offer something different for the families that might live in there, and I don't know what that would be. And I'm not, I'm not out there every day, but one of the, a couple of things I'm going to throw out is, I don't know, like a satellite tree. What does that mean to me? That means that if people want to buy satellite, we got a, we know where to put the post, and they can hook up to it, and they can run it through the thing, and it's not hanging off the building, you know? Or, we make something so that it can take on solar panels later on, something that makes us look progressive and that we're looking out tomorrow and say, "Hey, let's try that." Wilmer's got some cool things going on, and this might not be the project, but I want the community to be thinking in those terms to say, "Hey, what can we do to say, 'Hey, I like the little one' because they've got some great ideas and different ideas and fun ideas." And I don't, I know you got green this and green that, but something beyond that, you know what I mean? And I don't know if that's, and it's all cost.
Are you speaking within this development, or just generally?
Any development.
So, yeah, I mean, I did, I just heard somebody, they're a support service provider that has mostly a presence in the southern part of the country, but they're looking at expanding, and they do a lot of job training stuff. So, depending on the situation, in their case, what they focused on was like a whole program around training people to be property managers, which isn't nearly as exciting as what you're talking about. However, it was, it was like, you know, people living there could just sign up for this program and then go through the job training, and it was all free, free of charge, you know? I mean, I like the idea of having that employment resource available to people. I think there might be a way we can integrate some sort of employment resource. I don't know about necessarily the satellite thing, but...
Those are just far-fetched ideas. Those are just seeds to plant and get people thinking about, we've got a technology campus, you know? We want to be promoting that and getting people coming here, and we want little kids to think, "Hey, somebody, I can be working out there as an engineer."
Right.
We want to grow that.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, there are some interesting social service agencies, and this one in particular that I just met with last week, that are looking at that and saying, "How do we bring these employment resources?" So, I will be following up with them. I'll see, you know, who else I can find to bring those services to our development as much as possible.
Sure. And it's just, like I said, more of a statement, more of an idea.
Yeah, yep.
Kind of thinking down the road. Thank you very much. I'm excited about the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It does sound pretty exciting, and I like the fact that Jill and her group will be managing it. I don't know if there'll be an onsite manager, or if there will be. Okay.
Yep, we'll have an office, a fitness center. I didn't go over the amenities. I knew I was forgetting something. Onsite, office, manager. There'll be a part-time manager for this number of units, but they'll share with some of the other properties in town. They'll have their office, and then the support service person will have a desk there, too. And then, we'll have our fitness center, a community room with kitchen, and just general lounge, you know, space as well within the community area.
And then, I like it that you have to keep it for 30 years.
Yeah.
You're in on it, then.
Yeah, it's the cornerstone of the success of this program. That's why most people don't hear about problems in their community with the tax credit development.
And then, the location is good there because there's no single-family housing with two blocks.
Right. We're kind of creating a community of our own there. I mean, there's other multifamily housing.
One point I don't like is giving up the tapping fee. The city needs money, too, so $63,000, that's a lot of dollars.
Right.
And we're talking about workforce housing, but it is low-income housing, so we should be talking about our employers' need to pay employees better because this will probably put a burden on the county because you build it, we're going to get more people coming into Wilmer, and they'll be requesting other services, too.
Well, typically, we're looking at drawing from within the county versus outside of the county.
Yeah. We know how people are nowadays, so they travel. And then, this must have been a form letter you have in here. "The high-quality housing will meet the needs of the growing workforce in Pine City."
I revised that. I don't know who sent the old one out.
Okay, yeah. It says Wilmer on top.
Yeah, I did revise that after our last meeting, and apparently now it's gone viral. That's always fun.
Otherwise, yeah, it sounds like a nice project.
Thank you.
Sean?
Thank you for your presentation. I was just curious if you could email us your presentation, so as we digest over the next couple of weeks, we can have your real numbers there to look at as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Audrey, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you. I have been attending those housing meetings, and I know you've worked very hard and have asked a lot of questions about our community. And to put the proposal together, you've made several revisions, and I think this really does represent a good proposal for our community and the location. And I think it speaks to the needs that we have found in that housing study, and we have needs across all income levels and all housing types. So, very pleased with your presentation. Thank you very much for your efforts, because I know you've worked very hard on this.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Erin, on behalf of the mayor's office, I appreciate the project you're bringing, too, so we have a lot of things to consider, and you'll be hearing from us, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet. Next, we have an update on the Y project. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Mark, members of the council, not so much of an update because there's not a lot that's changed in the last few weeks. We continue to work on the language for the master cooperative agreement, and as far as the city's concerned, I think we're down to trying to agree or disagree on some language that has been suggested and vetted by the group regarding the siding or the second track. Our goal in pursuing this language was that the Y would actually serve its intended function, and the intended function is to take trains out of town, to take noise out of town, to free up crossings so that there's not a public safety negative impact, and then also to deal with the issue of economic development. The language that I threw out to BNSF and the group was a little stiffer than the language that you have in front of you tonight, and I'm just going to read that. This is how BNSF and the group has proposed that we deal with the rail siding issue and the fact that it's not part of the original project. And also, it's important to remember that the grant was cut from $15 million to $10 million, and that forced everybody to go back and take a second look at how they were going to provide for the project. Anyways, the proposed language reads, "BNSF will construct embankment for the rail siding in conjunction with mainline embankment construction," meaning the dirt work will be done for two tracks initially. "BNSF will report average daily train traffic over the Y on an annual basis for five years following activation of the new rail line. Typically, they're only required to report for three years. We argue that they report for five years." "MINDOT has identified a theoretical capacity of the Y track at 12 trains per day. MINDOT's Office of Rail has said that there should be no congestion issues as long as that 12 trains per day is not exceeded on the Y track. BNSF's annual reporting on average daily traffic volume enables the public partners to compare actual train activity versus that threshold. In the event annual average daily traffic volume exceeds the 12 trains per day theoretical capacity during the reporting period, the parties agree to meet to discuss the network conditions leading to the threshold being exceeded, and if jointly determined to be necessary, implement operational or other measures to direct movement of train traffic between the Morris and Marshall subdivisions over the Y rather than the Wilmer terminal." We wanted more definitive language in there. Burlington Northern has balked at that because they said, "We're looking out three years before the line gets active, five years for reporting, we're looking eight years out," and they're trying to make a commitment or a guesstimate based on what their operations might be at that time. I think that it's safe to say, and my understanding of the railroad, is that BNSF is going to work to manage their operations so that they're most efficient for BNSF, and that logically would direct that traffic over the Y. If it turns out that they exceed that 12 trains per day, I think we're in a good position to remind them of what their responsibilities are, and that can, they can control that either with scheduling in the way of implementing operational measures or other technology measures to direct movement of train traffic. And we've gone round and round. I see this as about the final piece of the master cooperative agreement that needs to be agreed to or moved forward. I'm not at all confident that we're going to get any better language than what is in front of us right now. I will defer to the council. If they want Sean and I to go back to the table and to push that, we're certainly willing to do that. Every time we're on the phone with BNSF, though, they've got two operations people and probably six attorneys in the background because nobody can make a decision until they've vetted even the most simple language with their attorneys. It's a very unique process. Staff really doesn't have a recommendation for the council, other than that we recommend the council make a decision and give us some additional directions so that we can get this project, the preliminary parts wrapped up, and get the master agreement prepared for execution.
Bruce, thank you for your work on this. I know you and I have talked about this many times along with Sean, and I think you guys have negotiated very well on our behalf, and I think that this is probably the best we can get, and I do agree with you that this is something that we need to have so that we have it documented that when it exceeds that level, that we can do some things. So, thank you for your hard work on this. I know it hasn't come easy to you and to staff to try to get to this point, so I appreciate that. Counsel, do you have any questions? Sean? Audrey?
No, thank you. I think this is exactly what we talked about before, with the exception of the reporting piece, but the other piece that is some cause for concern is the last one, the "if jointly determined to be necessary." They can just simply say it's not necessary at any point?
The way it is written, that's exactly what it means. The words mean exactly what they say, and they have some issues with obligating themselves for a future construction that may never be needed, and they said that as soon as they would have language that committed them to construction in there, that under their company rules, they have to fund that project, or it becomes added in as this project's cost, and they would have to look elsewhere in the project to cut, and there's really nowhere else in the project to cut.
Sean?
They have a very strict business model, let's put it that way.
Sean, I may add that the original language, the word jointly was not in there. So, basically, it said, "If they determined that it was necessary, they would do something about it." We added the word jointly in there, meaning that if all the partners got together and decided together that something different needed to be done than it would be. So, it brings us back to the same conversation later, but at least it doesn't leave it all up to them to decide if it's necessary.
Of course, I appreciate the advocacy that we clearly have under this way, how of course I would want to see that we actually would have some authority, but I understand where you're at and the difficulties of it, but this is the best we can do. I guess that's where we're at.
Sean, if I had my way, that authority would have been left in Sean's hands to determine, but they weren't buying into that.
I think we offered that at one time, didn't we? It didn't go very far. Audrey?
Just seeking clarification, if I understand we're at a deadline, so do you need us to do something tonight, or are you, I mean, this is a work session, so what are you asking or what do you need?
Well, the master cooperative agreement still has to come back to the council to sign, but if it's the consensus of the council that this is acceptable language, we'll move that forward at our meeting this week, and they'll wrap up work on the master cooperative agreement and have that back for signatures sometime in June, I believe.
Okay, so do we as a council have to...
No.
Will we have to take action at some point in time before it's signed?
I believe that that would be appropriate, to have the council formally accept the master cooperative agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Audrey, I guess what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see us move this to the council agenda, vote on it, of supporting it, so that we don't at some point come back and say, "Well, that's not really what we meant," and then staff has gone out and said, "This is what council, direction we received from council." There was conversation between staff and myself last week as to, "Can we move this forward?" And I wanted to come back to the council, to have the council have one last look at it, because it's not exactly my recollection of what we talked about the last meeting. We wanted more control. This has given up a little bit of that control, but I think it's the best we can get. So, that's why I wanted to come back to council.
I think, I think we should probably act on this this evening. I mean, we put, you know, we're a thorn in the side of making it go out five years, which I think is fine, but yeah, as I've already pointed out, I think losing a little bit of that authority there, we may have overextended what we can have authority doing, but at least we'll have a voice at the table. but at least we'll have a voice at the table here.
Okay, sounds good. So, staff, can you make sure we move that to the agenda? Thank you. Next is consideration of cooperative construction agreement for project number 1703A. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In front of you is almost identical to the cooperative agreement we had last year for the north half of Lakeland Drive. The county decided, or the county offered a total of $200,000 to help overlay that project, since it was originally a county turnback road, and we used $100,000 of it last year in a cooperative agreement, much the same as this, and we're going to use the $100,000 this year in this cooperative agreement.
Counsel, do you have questions? Is this something going to the next gen?
It can wait two weeks, or three, I guess, this month.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else for the conversation for this meeting? Otherwise, we will recess, or we'll adjourn into the next meeting. Okay, we're moving to the next meeting. Thank you all.